Okay.
That's technology, Alan. Technology, Alan.
So all this meeting to order. Thank you, thank you. Obviously for the technology thing, it's there. For Donald's benefit, I know he said before, I'm going to have to try this better than everybody, but people try to speak like acoustic acoustics and they're all pretty awful. So we'll move straight into the agenda. So agenda title one, Chair's remarks. Obviously, it's only been three weeks since our last meeting, which that was on board. I think the most important thing that's come to our attention in this period is that Bradford Council have told us that the Priestley Amex, the Trust, the Alfred Shop Memorial Trust, their Regulatoring Appeals Committee has a meeting on Thursday to discuss it and is looking at how they might go about distributing money. So I think that's a big step forward. Geoff's going with two hats on, I think, so it's going to be a big attended meeting. And we'll see what comes out of that as to how they're going to distribute the money. Obviously, this is welcome progress and people in Bingley have been waiting for a significant time for us to get to this point where there will be hopefully a proper process put in place and a frequent distribution of funds. The Warm Spaces Initiative is up and running. There is the website, I mentioned it in the last council newsletter. So there's a website people can go and look at, which is possibly where the that shows everywhere within the district where people are setting up warm spaces. If you go to, in Bingley, there's two of there at the moment, which is the library, which is obviously open most days, and then Cardigan House, which is separate. I think it's just one day where they're going to be open. But there's six locations in Kingfellow, they're at Mount, a couple in Shippware, obviously more in Bradford. So if people are looking for those things, then there is that information available and they can go and help themselves at these places for warmth and free to leave tea, coffee and any other food. I think the other thing is, obviously, before the last meeting, we had our October market where a number of storeholders had dropped out on the day again, which was disappointing. But Bradford have started their pilot for the markets themselves on Saturdays where they've got an artisan market, a guy in Howard. As far as we're aware, it's only a pilot. They've had, it's run for two, it's been on two Saturdays so far. They are getting a number of stores. I think they said they'd get up to 20. I haven't seen that many yet, but it's somewhere between around 15 they seem to be getting. Whether it's, hopefully it is sustainable, but we'll see how that goes. I think that's it for me tonight. So then moving on to 137, apologies for absence. I think the book's gone round, has everybody seen it?
It's right here.
So, you have to remember who's in it. Council Curdall, Barton.
Proposed.
Done together?
Proposed.
First by councillor, second by councillor, all in front of that. Okay, 138. It's too dark for you. Dislosures of interest, received declarations of interest from council, council's rights on the agenda. Are there any declarations?
In the interest of clarity, speed indicating devices, Oakley Road, Elwick is mentioned, and deliver on Oakley Road, Elwick.
I keep getting sort of this, I don't think. Did you get it?
Yeah.
That's all. Do we have any written requests for this concern? We're on to item 139, minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any corrections of the minutes of the previous meeting?
So.
First by councillor Clark, second by councillor Bill, all in front of that. Item 140, confidential items to be discussed after item 157. Does anybody have any items on that one? So it should be moved. No, I think, I think government. Public participation, I don't know, public participation.
No questions.
No questions. Thank you, government, thank you for your attendance. So item 142, ongoing items, we've seen that date and the following issues and the bringing of other actions. So, Bingley Pool.
I have a meeting on Thursday. The level up bid has progressed to the next stage and they've contacted Bradford Council for more details. Maybe Geoff might know a little bit more about that. But it's still in progress. There could be a delay given all the political issues that are going on. And I've got my level up secretary. But it's all sort of going in that direction and as backup plans, we're looking, we're working for like the Heritage Culture Fund to secure funding for. Just for preliminary testing, I can't think of the word, testing.
Market testing?
No, it's to check the building and everything, I can't think of where.
Where do I know? Survey?
There will be surveys, yeah. Surveys to check on the feasibility studies. Sorry. So feasibility studies, so it will just be a pot of money there if there, if we end up wanting to, which is taking the building on with the council, et cetera, and using it to block them. But again, it's all depending on until the level up bid is completed.
Just to clarify on timing of the government's response to the level up plan. As we reported originally, we were told that it was going to be probably by the end of October. And that is the outgoing leveling up secretary, Simon Clarke, said in the public in the last week or two that things were likely to be delayed and it's unlikely to be before the end of the year, that an outcome for that leveling up. All the leveling up fund bids, remember Bradford have got other ones in as well. But of course, as Mo correctly said, because of the change of ministers and everything, we don't quite know exactly what's going to happen. Linked to that, there's the continued position of the town hall. It is relevant because the leveling up bid for Bingley covers the area near to the town hall. But then the town hall, hopefully, if the leveling up bid goes through, the town hall would be then almost developed, possibly as some sort of boutique hotel, almost linked to whatever happens with the leveling up fund bid. But I think the worry, and I think just to get it on the record at the moment, is that nearly all of the staff currently working in the town hall are moving to Shippware. So the building is going to be virtually unoccupied, though Bradford say it will still be used as a meeting space and they will have occasional meetings of staff, they say. And the concern is, and I raised it at the council meeting, is that in this interim, until we know what's going to happen to the town hall in the longer term, my fear is that it could be almost left to go direct. Though the portfolio holders told me that it will be kept secure and that it will be open for occasional meetings and he noted that the town council have been interested in having meetings there in the past. So he said it will be open and it will be kept secure, but I'm still slightly worried because it's already in a terrible state as it is.
Yeah, I think just on that, the staff had been fired. So I did say if it is free, maybe we could use it for some meetings. But I think the price that came out was extortionate. I was embarrassed, also advised that the price was ridiculous. We were able to use it, we could use it. I don't know what it was, just saying this, councillor.
What, what price? I think we normally pay for a meeting, we normally pay about £400. Does it? It was that an hour there. I think we're going to be paid £100.
Yeah, so if we went for all of these meetings, it would cost £150, basically.
I mean, it is a suggestion. Because the portfolio holder specifically mentioned Bingley Town Council as, you know, having expressed interest in the past at holding meetings, it wouldn't be a bad idea to officially contact them and say that, you know, that at least we might be interested if the price was reasonable and appropriate.
I suppose now that we've got the centre care table over there to open it up, so it will add to the cost. We can actually get it in case the cost has come down. Anyone on the pool? Right, okay. Thank you both. So the item B is the changing places toilet facility. I've got councillor Williams with us here. You want talks?
So they've been working on it this one. The electricians have been doing all their work on it. I think we've finished it today, haven't we? The plumber's there tomorrow. So I think we're still on track for completion by next Friday or the fourth. But we can't necessarily open it then because we've got certain criteria that we need to fulfil. We have a message from, is it the school district? And they're in charge of all the changing places projects. And there's certain things that we need to register it with them, we need to have certain plaques. So we need to organise all publicity with them so we can't send out any publicity without them paying it.
Do we know how access to it's going to work? Is it radar key or is it a code?
Radar key. Yeah.
So anyone can get in it, basically?
Whoever's got a radar key.
Because you can buy them from, from locals.
It will be locked when the toilets are locked. It will be locked, there is a key to lock it, so it'll be locked at six. So, yeah, that's the Spanish way.
Yeah, and all the stuff for about the publicity, what they've accomplished, doesn't it? We've got, we've got the contract, we've got Bradford, but we'll let us get their contribution. But as part of that, it all includes this plaque that will go on, that will include Muscat District, the department for whatever. Leveling up, as well, I'm not sure what it's called today. Probably Bradford Council and us. And then we've got to look at how we put in our sponsors to give some money towards it as well. But we do, we do finally have to contact with Bradford, which means we can get the money back from them. And I think Muscat District will want to come and check it before they put it on their changing places website as being, this is a public.
Oh, it doesn't.
Then, so obviously they across the country, because they run the changingplaces.org, are trying to make sure that they're all of A standard, appropriate standard, that they will be associated with, which is reasonable. Any questions? Okay, so moving on to C, climate emergency. Have we heard anything back from Yorkshire Water?
We haven't heard anything back from Yorkshire Water. And I think John also wanted to speak on this about solar panels.
Right. Months ago, Robert proposed FNGP that we ought to consider having solar panels on the roof of the offices in the new unit. We've never got on with it because we've always said that we needed a risk and resource document because we needed money to organise a feasibility study. Now, we're talking to Richard Dawson, who's an architect, and I said, could I have some advice on who to contact for a feasibility study? He said, all you need to do is send me an email and it'll be organised by the company that does it. Rose, what's the name of the company? Yorkshire somebody, et cetera.
Yeah, so there are various companies that will do these little studies, but this one, Yorkshire Energy Solutions, will do a study and propose a solar solution, which is one option for the council. And then if they wanted to get subsequent, you know, studies or quotes, if the council could do that, then it would be a start, wouldn't it?
Well, this is just to get a feasibility study because we're absolutely nowhere at the moment. It may have just left out court, to be fair, initially. But now with electricity, if you look at how much electricity, we're spending on electricity, it's a possible viable option. So I just think, I'd just like to propose that we ask Clarke to write to Richard and ask him if we can get a feasibility study done.
It is, is at no cost?
We understand, I understand so.
Is it no cost for the initial?
Pardon?
There would be no cost?
No.
Yeah. Can I just add on to that? It's obviously, it's a really good scheme. The other thing I think we needed to find out was the roof itself. If you kind of, yeah, report if you, you know.
Absolutely, this is what it's all about.
Fit onto the roof, will that be part of that?
Absolutely, yeah. It's not, it's not about whether you'd have any problems, it's a.
Would it work, sort of like?
Feasibility, it's a feasibility study.
Is that even going to?
Well, I proposed it.
Yes, I think the only, the real concern is the structure, whether we can take it. But there's another concern, I think, including issue. It might be necessary to have even an extended structure to give it protection from the top of the roof, a fence around the top of the roof.
I mean, that's.
This is kind of the.
To be perfectly frank, Robert, at this stage, it's totally irrelevant, is that? Because this is what, that's the whole point of the exercise.
If we need to vote on it, I'll second John's proposal.
Okay, so, so John's proposal is that.
Just to write to Richard Dawson and ask him if he.
Get the feasibility done for, or no cost?
That's what he asked me to do. And in the meantime, he's written to me and said, I haven't heard anything from you yet. So I've made, I've thought. Even, I think yourself, I've copied into the emails that I've sent, asking me where the email is. And I described to him that I can't do it on my own, but it has to be done through me to do it.
Okay, so first by councillor, second by councillor, all in front of that. And then, so, anything, anything else, anyone wants to write in, climate emergency?
Can I just, sorry? Perhaps I should have abstained from that, really, actually, that vote because it does involve writing to my family and there might potentially be some kind of humour interest in that that's simply down the road.
So, thank you. Okay, moving on to item D, speed indicator devices. So we agreed last conference that we'd buy three of them with negligence, but exactly where we want to put them?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we've got, you know, I mean, three seats. Now we need to find locations for the seats. I think initially myself and councillor Hazelton and a few others, we worked on, we looked at sites. I think Cottingley Moor Road near the school was one of the sites. And one site was mentioned at that time was Oakley Road in Elwick. And the third one was Beckford School in that area. But obviously, Beckford School is having some traffic calming measures. So I think we can exclude that. So I think, as councillors, I think we need to now find locations. And I think David sent an email, you know, I mean, looking at certain roads. I think, I think it's on the agenda, I think, the areas that David kindly highlighted was, I think, there was one park road between Hallbank and Lady Lane, Ferncliff Road between the bypass and Queensway, and I think Cross Flats between BGS.
Bingley Grammar School.
Oh, Bingley Grammar School and Tesco. And there was Prime Rose Lane. So we need to, as a councillor, as here, I think it might be a good idea to, if we can select fewer of the areas for the meantime, to make the initial start. Obviously, later on, if there's demand in other areas, these seats can be relocated in different areas. So I think I'll leave that.
If we are minded, these areas have come up in the initial conversations we were having and subsequent to it. It might worth having a chat with, that council highways that look after this area and say to them, look, these are the potential locations. Have we got the facilities there which are warranted? Get them to rank them for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can stand.
Would that be sensible?
Of the ones that you've proposed, are there any that people think shouldn't be included?
Shouldn't be, yeah.
I'm just a bit further between the bypass and the Queensway.
Put them, that's up.
And the Queensway, is that what you mean?
No, between them. So as, a lot of the conversations that were around, was it four years ago, it started this one? People come off the bypass or out of town and there's a set of lights at Mornington Road. Now, they happen to be at green.
Yeah.
For getting their foot down. So I think ultimately the suggestion would be past those traffic lights, but between there and Queensway.
Yeah.
And if I was suggested anything, somewhere to slow down when the bus comes out at Kent Road. But I think if we ask the council, it leaves some potential sites, which in your road safety terms would be our best first stop for thread.
And then Oakley Road out Elwick, I just think of it as being the road from Elwick all the way up to Digna to produce a possible.
The area of concern there is from the mini roundabout, interestingly declared, more towards Lansmore. People come off the mini roundabout and just get faster and faster and faster as they get up to Lansmore. It's hidden by the bushes, by the trees. But that was the area of concern. Bradford council might turn around and say, oh.
They've got a rear sign there, isn't it? It's spitting, there.
It was one of them, I think.
Yeah, no, it's a, you just cut trees down, you could get out there, you could see signs. It's quite heavy, just before Lansmore.
There's definitely an ideal location on Cottingley Moor Road, which is one of the original ones. Two long forces up from there, what's your road, Lysander?
Yeah, but I think it's the one that you're saying is just.
There's two, two up from there. But there again, trees are a bit on and it's terrible. They should cut, there's a lot of place where they should cut them back. But that'd be a, that's an ideal. I, I think one of the main guides should be sort of like the amount of traffic that uses that road, you know, for example, near the school or that sort of thing. I think that should be taken into consideration.
Which Bradford should be able to do. There are statistics on speed, volumes, reported accidents, which don't be criteria for more serious road spending. And if you take that in mind, you look at Cross Flats between the drive and what used to be Dave's cafe.
Right, yeah, right, right.
They come round the corner from Tesco and then hammer it again. So I think makes that to account, which will be there. The first sites, which are careful because there's criteria about putting them in, line the side, then the swing, etc. So some of the sites might not even be simple.
Are you going to make that proposition? Because I'll second it if you want to propose that we write to Bradford council and ask them for guidance.
Against all, just like that. Against the fact that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, list in what we've, what we've put down.
Yeah, we're listing what we've put down.
I'll second that.
Are you voting?
I'm voting for it.
Yeah.
So for Bradford council, that's, that's second, I think, as well, as well, as well.
The council rules that proposal.
They have to approve them anyway, don't they? So it makes sense, they're going to go.
Yeah. And I said, is your proposal, I'll second it.
Okay, so we'll move on to 143, finance. To receive the schedule of payments for October, are there any questions on that? To agree the bank regulations for September, any questions on the bank regulations? Any good odds of proposing? First by councillor Bradford, second by councillor, or a fiver? So you receive an update in the internal controls meeting, which calls 142. Councillor Dawson, do you want to speak on this?
I think we received today the written update in notes. And we went through the controls and everything was, that is factory, apart from the points that we picked up in the notes, which will be taken forward.
Any questions against Councillor Dawson and Laura Clark on that? That's just the receipt. And then so then D, to consider projects, service delivery, 2324. So you've got in your pack the list that was briefly discussed at the last FNGP with apologies to councillor Curdall because we've realised that we've missed off the community gift card, obviously needs to go on there for next year. So this is, this is the first pass really presented for information. And if there are any other projects or things that councillors think we should be considering for next year, can you feed it in as sat please? Are there any questions on what's there?
Excuse me, Chair. I clarify, this is at this stage a very draft.
It is very draft, yeah.
Isn't it? Because clearly, there are so many other costs the council has to take into consideration.
Yeah, but this, this is just about the major ongoing projects and service, service delivery. So if there was something new that needs to be factored in, this is where we could get cash flow.
Yeah, I mean, IT equipment, your laptops for council office, £1500. Let me remind all the one. Surely we don't pay £1500 for one laptop, do we?
The, the, I think the numbers are a bit preliminary as well. Is that the way for last year, wasn't it like to?
I think we did it by three because of the, the.
I think what we were intending is that we were moneying for one in case one broke, just so we have. Something.
Just to clarify, Chair, that these estimated costs, they do take into account where possibly what we spent this year, do they?
A lot of them do, yes.
Yes. Because it's quite difficult to judge in, I mean, you know, obviously, I know it's for the FNGP to do, but it's quite difficult when figures are plugged out to the air here of estimated costs. And, you know, it is relevant what we spent this year in a sense.
And I would say that I think the level of planning and questioning will not be that big the next year. Obviously, we're working on that. We would hope to be further along in the process. Okay, so really, that's, that's just where we are at now and for information. But is anything that people think is missing, if I can, if I can feed that in as soon as possible? Okay, so moving on to, I didn't try to, 144, policies to approve the voluntary policy. Anybody have any questions and queries on the voluntary policy? I've just got one, which I think he's still got a note in it, paragraph in it, where it says, I'm not sure this, I'm not sure. When you get to paragraph A, it's, it's got some of the blue text in it, it's coming. It says, not practical for the little bit, because you would have to look at the whole of the town centre. So instead, dot, 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 prior to work and answer your work risk assessment, one thing, so. So that just needs to tidy up.
Well, it all does, doesn't it? But we've just sent through the amended copy, the track changes, just so people can see that changes.
Oh, but that's one of the changes, is what I'm saying. But I think with, with that tidied up, I'm happy with it. Anyone else got any comments on it?
It's really, 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 really frustrating, isn't it? Because where we had stuff, for example, for the little bit that was straightforward, now we've got to start filling forms and stuff in. I know, I know we've had a meeting about it and it's just red tape. I know, I know we've had a meeting about it and it's just red tape, red tape, red tape. I'm just, I'm just, just a little up the horse. I'm sure that it's going to get passed, so. I just thought I'd let you know that I, I won't happy. It just puts people off if they've got to start writing the, writing the life history before they do a little bit, but there we go.
Well, we could, we could look at ways to leave it, some of that.
Well, I think we have done a little bit, but, uh, yeah.
I think we have. We'll, we'll see how it goes. If, if, if it stops people, then obviously that's not, not a big issue.
Well, we might, I know. Okay. Yeah.
It was following a fashion being shared.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, exactly. Yeah, but just, yeah, okay.
They got some proper master advice, isn't it? Okay, so to approve the voluntary policy, then I'll, I'll propose. Seven seconds against that, or a fiver.
I'm not saying with it. I don't abstain, I don't abstain.
So agenda item 145 Emergency Support, connected, we send an update. Anything?
Yes, thank you. We've had our first meeting, um, unfortunately due to Buro, who can only attend daytime, Bradford Council, uh, advisor. We might have it earlier. We have another meeting coming up on the fourth, if you see from the draft minutes. We have lots of questions, uh, that we still need answering, because unfortunately we were scheduled to turn up, he didn't. Uh, I think once we've got that advice, we can, uh, go back to a, a meeting time that actually suits more of the members on the committee. Um, mid, mid afternoon, which is, is difficult for a number of them. Um, I think once we have, uh, the further information, uh, then we'll be in a better position to, to actually brief the committee, uh, the council and actually incorporate the advice that we're asking within the EMAP policy. Michelle Chapman, um, previously sat on the, as a lay member. Chris Slaven, the ex-Grothford Council emergency planning officer, has expressed an interest. Claire has been in touch with Michelle, uh, and she is more than happy to, or return, uh, um, to, to, to the committee. We still wait a response from Chris Slaven. So at this meeting, we actually, in theory, have to say, well, these lay members can be members of the committee. So I would propose that, um, subject to, obviously Michelle's agreeing, but subject to, uh, Mr. Slaven agreeing, that both of those members are co-opted as lay members to the committee.
I'll second that.
Uh, I just want this, um, you've sent me an email asking about Cottingley, if there were anything in Cottingley and it's just, I've never replied to you. But I've just remembered who the person is. It was Jo Renard, who used to be a councillor. She sort of did a Facebook thing and then turned up at the office at the last flood, flood problem we had. So that's just for your information.
Okay, so I think.
Got the balls to.
How it's seconded mid, the, the two levers. Thank you, David. Moving on to 146, the Events Mark and Communications Committee. Councillor Dawson?
Um, so the next meeting is in November, as we weren't able to hold one last week. Um, we have how many possible lay members? Is it two?
Um, there was one.
One?
Um, I'm having to check the criteria for it.
Okay.
We've already got, we've already got Chris O'Neil on board and, um.
And Donald.
And Donald and Jane Stone.
So they're already on board, aren't they? They don't need approving here, so, because they've already been, so I, I think we'll just have to wait on the fourth of November. And then there was discussion around, um, supporting and advertising in the Your Local magazine, um, which will be the new name of the venue directory from October. Um, so the quarter page is eighty six, half page a hundred and seven, and the premium full page, center page is a hundred and fifty seven. So I would suggest going for half page ad, um, one to support the magazine, but also to try and promote, um, the, the market, um, our farmers' market, and maybe also mention the other markets as well, as well as just generally raise, raise awareness of the, the council.
Is that per month?
Yes, per, um, publication, yeah.
Thanks, monthly magazine.
Monthly, yeah.
And how many we think we've done?
How many what?
How many months?
Well, I think we just do it for one month, one of the, we could just stick a QR code or something and see if people can link back through the website and do some tracking. And see if, you know, see, see if we can work out ways of monitoring whether it's effective or not. Um, and, uh, you know, whether we get any tape from it.
Yeah, doing all the circulation, is it posted out to residences or is it, is that you pick up in a shop?
It's distributed to most, yeah, most houses. Well, lots of houses, you see, but most houses don't, that's the thing, so. That's the, yeah, some of them, some people do get it.
So, so as an experiment, a one month with a QR code, try to get some feedback and then maybe look again to see, oh yeah, we've got plenty of traction or.
I think so. I mean, we, we better, we could commit to a bit more than that, but I think perhaps just initially give them the cost, because they are quite large, just to try them and see how it goes and, um.
Do you think it would be worth leaving it till next year? I've discussed this with Debbie and we've got, we, we're not in time now for the November market. So there's just the December market and we don't have a January market.
That's a good thought, actually. Yeah, why don't we just do it for that then?
Maybe it's also February, March.
Yeah, February, March might be better next year. And then also we'd have a clearer idea about the councils, the events for next year. And could maybe even include, you know, we could just use it as a kind of editorial in a way, wouldn't we? Just to talk about perhaps the play, the park events or other things that the council might be supporting.
It could go to EMAP, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Possibly.
I, I'd like to second Ross's proposal to take it on a page, I'd, in the near future.
In the near future. Uh, yeah, I think doing something in, in the near future, yes. So all in five months. Anything else you need to address? So mov- moving on to 147, the Finance and General Purposes Committee, to see update and decisions from FNGP. So A is written, uh, to note new sites to recommend to Bradford councils and form suggestions for business. Now, I think councillor Good and I undertook to have a look at this, but we haven't.
I noticed that, we haven't.
Had a chance to.
We haven't raised on that, have we? No, no, no. So just to, we, we'll look at that in the near future.
Look at that and go back to FNGP. But I, I would say, I had a quick look and I think having a number of years was probably getting towards the end of sensible policies with written stuff, councillor, is what I think.
Yeah, I mean, lovely lane, uh, myself and councillor Two went there. There is a bin, it was empty and subsequently it was found that it's a private bin by residents of the row. So whether we need to buy a new bin or maybe just fill it, um, because there's a bin in existence.
Really?
We've had the opportunity, but where's mine? All the stickers on it?
Yeah.
See some more?
They wouldn't have shown close. I can't understand why they want one. It's flat. It runs into A, runs into Shirley Lane, if I've got it right.
Yeah, I, I.
I think that seems to be just a, a nice thing to have, but I mean, I think part of these.
No, no, you're right, you're absolutely right.
No, no, I, I, I think a lot of the, the, the stores are possibly not the best candidates, but John and I will score them about my own. I, I don't think, you know, we haven't got much of the sensible places in here for it.
If I recollect, we did, uh, suggest that we actually use Bradford council's, uh, home assessments. So flat, steep, high number of houses, and it will roll you home out if we speak.
We've agreed to that at FNGP, I think, yeah.
Councillor Dawson?
I would say Morebottom Lane is a, a good contender though. It is quite steep, it gets very icy. It's sheltered, there are a lot of houses up there, you know, more houses than people think actually. So I would suggest that that is, would be a good place to locate a bin. And I did check on my next stop walk whether there is a bin there. I'm pretty sure there isn't though.
I, I don't think there is one, but if you can check that, I think we're. Okay, so we'll, we'll take that back to FNGP. So three.
Shall we say we'll have a look at it before next FNGP? Yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll have an assessment of that while we're on the air.
I hope it won't take that long, but yeah, okay. York, even in York, aren't they, yeah?
So moving on to three, then, the allotments tonight, decisions made regarding the split of plots. So FNGP, it's a, we took, discussed this earlier last time, that we would split both plots, AA and one B and offer them out to people. I don't know if there's any update on whether they've been taken.
Yeah, there's a, there's a little, there's a little update from me, which is I actually went on site this week, uh, and I've, I've been with Ruth, uh, recently and that, the one A, one, the one B plot splits because there's a, a brick or a step, steps up the middle of it, so we're splitting it half and half. So that doesn't, that's really need, um, marking. Uh, the other one, which is eight A, um, yeah, eight A, I, I've measured it out and it come, just as a matter of interest, uh, I'm sure that seventy, seventy square metres were mentioned at some stage and they're both about seventy, give a tech, seventy square metres when, after being split. So I've just put some initial pegs in to start off with, but I'm thinking of putting some more permanent lining, uh, basic fence would be a better word, just to, just to split them, uh, if that's okay. Um, what's the position about, um, I'll need some tannolized timber. Uh, can I just get that and, and just, uh, bring it, a bill here with that?
Probably should have that, if you're.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well. As I say, I put a couple of sticks in that can start digging tomorrow for me, but, um, that I, I prefer just putting a line in, a couple of posts in. Maybe even concrete a couple of little posts in, in the three, we say three foot, how do you think, uh, yeah?
Yeah, I've got some more posts if you want.
Yeah, well, I, I know there's those ones, but I think if we get sort of the tannalized, tannolized stuff, it'll last longer, that's all I'm thinking. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Maybe come and have a look if you want, but I've said pegged it out if you want to go have a look any time. Okay? Right.
I think that's probably it. I want, any questions when you're ready? So C, Budget, to receive an update on plans for budget. I think we've, we've almost, we're tough for me, so there's, there's service to worry about in the projects that we've already looked at. Obviously, FNGP are working through, looking at spending, spending for this year, and what I'd like to have to discover there and what I'm going to do for the project for next year. It's obviously to bring back the full council in January.
Can I just ask the SIL funding, is it five years that we have to spend SIL amount or is it ten?
Five.
Right, so that SIL funding for twenty eight, for, for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen has to be spent in twenty three, twenty four, isn't it?
Trying to spend it.
Councillor Good has himself.
Doing his best.
On, on that, if there are, if there are any organisations out there that we do have a ground process for, which people can use to come and claim SIL, you know, for such a creepy club, came for seven thousand pounds this year. There, there's the money there, if people want to bring things forward, uh, obviously there's money there for, for those who consider it.
Yeah.
But we don't need to spend it before, otherwise we have to give it back out.
But, but Chair, I, I suppose, you know, that message needs to go out. I mean, if, if, if there is SIL funding money, as you say, which is unallocated, um, and if there's good community projects, it may be that some of the people doing the projects wouldn't have thought about SIL money unless, you know, we, you know, we make it known through our comms, um, machinery.
Perhaps through advert in some sort of local, some local newsletter perhaps.
Just a few Facebook posts and something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it, it might be that, that's, that's something that we should do for all of our grants, because we, we don't tend to. We, we don't tend to do like Brent, who, where they have Facebook posts, but they're usually, like, chest runs, but we don't rely on people for anything, for any of those things. Maybe something that next time you might pick up as well. Other, other than that, you've got minutes for the FNGP. Any questions or any doubts? Item 148, the neighbourhood plan working group, to receive any updates and recommendations from the neighbourhood plan working group. Um, in the councillor's absence, you get a head in. We have met, we have worked through the consultant. I think we're now almost at the, at the final draft of the neighbourhood plan. Um, there are still some things we need to do before we can go to the official scheduled fourteen consultation. One, one hurdle that we hadn't thought we would have to jump over is that Bradford have now recommended that we should write in advance to the owners of the properties that we have in our heritage list and our green spaces list, just to give them forewarning. We're underway with that, but effectively it's a case of writing to them and giving them, it's, it's almost a pre-consultation, consultation. So I think the, the group's thinking that we'll write to them and give them four weeks to call back. And then anything that, anything that we decide we need to do from their responses, we then have to go into the draft plan before we go out to the scheduled fourteen consultation. So it's unlikely the scheduled fourteen consultation will begin this calendar year. I think, I think everybody would like it to progress and happen early in the new year so that effectively we can almost complete our bits of the neighbourhood plan prior to the elections that come up in the May. So it's, it's, it's as dumb as we can do before councillors may change come next, come next year. The, the one thing that, that we do want to do is to get some, is, is to get the, the plan into a more presentable format. So at the moment, it's a, it's a relatively heavyweight document, so the, the bit on the agenda is that bringing three quotes through, selecting one, for making, making the plan into a proper document, putting, putting some decent photos around it, making it accessible, having some printed copies, getting some postcards done, so to go out to people when we go to consultation. And so that's, that's the recommendation, the full council, the quote three is pursued for the design and printing of the plan. Any questions?
And that plan, are we going to get professionals in to help us or is it all self-generated?
Sorry?
That, to do the neighbourhood plan, the final product brochure that comes out.
Well, that's what this three thousand, it's, it's for, that's the professional help to, to make it, make it into a professional document.
Uh, why particularly was quote three recommended? Was it to do with price or was it to do with anything else?
Price and, um, just quality, and quality.
I think just because it's, you know, it, it's something that's been working on for a long time. We don't want to just have price as the main driver, do we? We want it to be the best it can be.
Yeah, no, no, we, we, we were confident that the, the, the voter would do a good job for work that had.
That's the main thing, yeah.
Does that, does this three thousand need to be approved, David?
It doesn't need to be approved.
No, I'll sit, I'll pause that.
Second by councillor Supper. So, item 149, planning committee, council club?
Absolutely nothing to report. We had a very long wait to move.
We had a very long wait to move, so.
That's not like you, Howard.
Next one will be even longer. Having proved, nothing to report, it's all left everybody to see.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Howard. Agenda item 150, community events, considering all local events, received updates to great reaction. A, it's Remembrance Day, I think, well, we're getting wreaths.
Yeah, we've got to put that wake up.
Yeah, exactly, so just letting them know, giving down the word for it. I've said I'll go along and play it, any other councils who want to attend?
Is it in Mersel Park, is it?
Yeah, two months in Park. We also normally do, do a litter pick on the morning to make sure that the roof is clear, capital does.
No, you just, I was just going to ask about those.
Yeah, that's fine, so next time I'm going and do.
I don't think anyone heard that, and B, Christmas in Belem, we're having it in November. I think we met with the Chamber of Trains yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah, yesterday, yeah. It looks like everything's in place for the Christmas fair, light switch on, John?
No, not just to endorse what you said, Mark and I, I was also attending that meeting. We're going to meet to, to, tomorrow about the actual lights themselves. They're not having, they're, they're having, they're not, no, they're having Santa's Grotto, but they're not having the one that we used to get up at six o'clock in the morning to construct. They've, they're hiring, they're hiring an inflatable grotto, Santa's Grotto. They've got one, one Santa up to now and they're, and they're organising, hopefully they're organising some others. They've.
More than one Santa?
You'd have three.
Surely there's only one Santa?
There's only one Santa.
Sorry, I missed, I missed that, never mind. That's it now, isn't it? Martine came along in the absence of Jamie as chief health and she was talking about not having any junior elves, but just having senior elves this time. We also discussed where the Star Wars people are going to get changed, she's hopefully organising that in, somewhere in the Arts Centre. There's going to be donkeys, there's going to be road train, there's going to be carousel, there's not, there's going to be a DJ there, most from, not classic, the other one, Puls. There's going to be a singer and a choir. And then they've got, as far as I know, the, if this is official, that Robbie Paul were going to be asked to, to switch the, switch the lights on. So Robbie, Robbie Paul for, not everybody knew Robbie Paul. Robbie Paul's a ex-New Zealand and Bradford Bulls Rugby League international and he currently works in media and I don't know which club. I don't think he works for the club now, but he worked for several clubs. But yeah, so it's all going forward with, we as being the town council concerned about what. Firstly, we haven't booked a stall and the stalls are sort of fully booked anyway. So going on the last event that we had there, the uptake from councils were pretty low. And so we've decided not to have any presence in the, in the inside, inside the Arts Centre for a Bingley Town Council stall. Because the event, Bingley Town, sorry, the Arts Centre have an event on that evening. The stall holders were asked to be, to come a little bit earlier to set up and to open the stalls and to have them cleared for three o'clock, ready for, I think it's four o'clock for the switch on, it's a four, a four thirty, I think.
Four thirty.
Four thirty, I think that's it, is that right, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, their only involvement really is the lights.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else is down to the chairman, it's not down to us at all.
No, no.
In a big kind of way of telling.
There may be a fan for a grant.
Sorry?
There may be a fan for a grant, I thought.
Yeah, there might be a fan for a grant, yeah.
Yeah, well, hopefully.
But I mean, that's the only thing that'll involve us, the rest of it, we'll get the lights checked out tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully it should be all right.
Yeah, I just thought I'd update people.
Yeah, no, fine.
Okay, so we'll move on to 151, Bingley Town.
Right, so once again, we had an exceptionally good litter pick on Saturday. Twenty-six bags collected, don't know where it all comes from. The next litter pick is before the remembrance service. So I, I am suggesting, talk to Debbie who does the, who now does the posters, suggesting an eight o'clock start because we needed to get it all cleared for nearly twenty ten. But I've also asked her to, to write in to any potential residents who were frightened of getting up at eight o'clock in the morning, that they can come at any time and they don't have to come for the two hours. I think that's important, that keeps, that's sort of came up in the, in the last little bit. If they come for half an hour, that's, so it's been fine, it's, you know. And the other thing is, if, if there is a councillor available to help me on that day, because it's all leaves basically. And I do have the facility of a backpack blower and a spare needle blower for blowing leaves. And I'd rather be doing that than trying to install it, but you'll be there, that's fine.
Is it so rich ages, is it?
Them, thirteen, yeah.
No, I'm so sorry, I can't.
I can do it.
Yeah, all right, yeah, it's just a matter of signing people in and issues, so I mean, I'll be there to do it, but if, what I'm saying is people are coming at different times.
Yeah.
So if you want, just be dodging about and just be there.
I'll be the admin person, yeah, that's fine, mate.
Yeah, and just hope that, hope that they haven't got any of them new forms to do for, before we get there.
Print them out, throw them.
A straight signing will be all right. Another thing that cropped up, I've, I've been in correspondence with Cross Flats Village Society. Cross Flats Village Society asked me, sent me an email to say that the two wooden planters that were supplied by Bradford Council early in the year, what shall, can we take them over? If we take them over, are they going to take all our plants out? So I've done some research through Andy Alderson and finally got permission that both highways and parks are happy for them to take over. The point that I'm bringing this up is, in my view, these two planters should be added to the watering contract with an override to say that these actually belong to Bradford Council and we shouldn't be charged anymore for doing the two extra, extra things. Is that Nicola looking at me? Yeah, you get that, Nick?
So Cross Flats Village Society are going to own them, what we want to add to this.
No, they're, they're going to maintain them and plant them, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but they're on the watering contract, but I think that they should be included, we should include in that and then they'd be, they'd be paying for it. I don't exactly know when the plants are coming, but hopefully it's going to be beginning of November. Nicola's also reminding us that we need to be ordering, asking groups to order, the summer bedding ready by December. We have to have that ordering by December, so we'll, we'll be getting on with that in, in November. I think that could be what I like to say at the moment, okay, thank you.
Any questions for Councilor? Okay, what can I just recall the fans for doing the litter pick before the remembrance day?
Yeah, 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 cool, yeah.
So moving on to 152, fire rights way marking, received updates that, this is the same as the last one, where I said I'm waiting for Bradford to come in December so we can work out if there's any city of culture money to help with this. If we can go and start more crowds gathering, what we, what we want.
Not next, no, we haven't got there yet, next time, sorry.
Any questions?
Well, why, why do we need to wait for Bradford Council, surely we must have enough money in the days?
Well, now, what we're talking about doing is we were going to do the painting on the floor of the way marking and we've had a number of discussions where other, other places have done in, in the sort of brass things in, in the pavement and whether as part of city of culture we could go up on the stage to get something better and help as part of city of culture get fire rights put on their map, where we want to go and how we want to be included. It's just something that we actively put in front of them as something they could do to help us as well.
But I think it was clear that they haven't got a clue what, I mean, it's not, it's not public what they've applied to do. The document's not public, the big document's not public, they don't really know yet what they're going to do, we could be waiting years for this.
Well, they're coming in December to talk to us, so if, if there's nothing that comes out of that, then we can progress. But if there is some option for us to get some money to do something better and more long-lasting, you've been going through. I don't, I don't see that that's, we would want to wait and see if we can set advantage. But I, but don't you think we don't want to stop for hours?
I, I just think it's been ongoing for so long, hasn't it really? And that it would be nice for next spring at least to have something so that when, you know, we want to encourage people to come from next spring, that, that something's there. And even if we had something that was just kind of some painted things on the pavement, that would be a first stop. It doesn't preclude Bradford providing some more funding for something smarter or better, which would still be, you know, two years hence, we'll tell you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Possibly, I, I, I think if we've done something, then that will be it. That's my concern, I suppose. It's not that something will come afterwards that will be better, it will be because you've already done something we don't need to do to help you out.
Oh, yeah, there's that.
We will see what happens in December and then make some, make some progress.
Yeah.
Concerned. So items 153, the town parks are drawn, anything?
No.
Any questions, any of it for you?
No.
No, okay. So, agenda item 154, correspondence, the neighbourhood plan, we have correspondence from potential potential, so email, no written papers or music.
Yeah, I, yeah, well, I saw, I invited, invited two meeting with friends of Mertle Park, two, two members of friends of Mertle Park. Met David Carpenter and spoke for some time of his ideas. He had several meetings with other groups, musicians, music teachers, et cetera, et cetera. And I just wondered if being the town council would like to hear, he'd be willing to come to address the council. What, what does the council think? I, I'd like to propose that we invite him, but I don't know anybody else who's got.
Second that.
And, and received his correspondence.
Pardon?
The correspondence that's been sent by resident, resident, Bingley's Music Time, I didn't get an email about it.
Well, I did.
I didn't.
It gave, it gave a vast, a vast list of all the music venues in Bingley and all sorts of stuff.
So we just have it, because I didn't get an email.
Well, I sent it to the full council, yeah.
I think it rose a while down there.
Right.
Well, it was, it was actually fourth of October, so it was actually last March. But I definitely sent it to the local.
Can we, can we just, so the council director again? So, so John's proposing we invite them to cover.
For the council, mate, I'll second that.
Are you all against?
Not against either, no.
Okay, and then B emailed the resident, the correspondent from Yorkshire. This was not a long, another matter?
Yeah, this was a very mail, again, it was from Richard Dolson, just that he's been, he is in Yorkshire Water, I've been quite regularly about concerns. And they sent him a message back, which was quite positive, it cleared a lot of it, so.
So this is the same issue which Dale raised.
It wasn't about the people, I don't think it was about the people.
No, it's a separate thing, isn't it?
Yeah, it's about the, it's about.
About the state of the, of the town.
Russell, Russell knows what to do.
I ought to have declared an interest really in this, so I shall, but it's about more, it's about the general state of the moor. It's about the state of the walls which are falling down and precarious, it's about the state of the buildings on the moor. It's about the general state of much of the litter and the two things that happens on the moor. And it's about Yorkshire Water's responsibility for the moor really. And so Richard has been really concerned about the moor for a long time and has been emailing Yorkshire Water over a period of years really, and finally their community champion has engaged. And they may, he's sent them quite specific locations as to where the issues are. And hopefully they'll come and do something to address those concerns really.
Can I just say that I did, after this, I did get in touch with Richard about, about littering on the moor and suggesting that Bingley Town Council had a litter pick there. And he said at the moment it was mainly, it wasn't bad at the, at the present time, so I'll bear that in mind and consult with him in the future.
So it's a possible future?
It's possible, we've done them in the past there, we have, we've done them in the past there. I have a very, very, very memorable time where I slipped and I basically, seriously, I had to change my trousers. And put some.
Might pass a risk assessment.
But we did, but good did come out of that back.
It did, it did, it did.
We did get the footpath fixed.
We did indeed, we did indeed, yes.
But in, but in terms of us here, it was just to know that there's nothing, I think there was a request in the first.
No, just in hours.
Good.
I'm sure anyone who wants to join Richard's campaign in Yorkshire Water would be welcome. Okay, so 155, promotional items, considering promotional items from this meeting.
Did you promote grants that, the money that's available, silver money as well?
Yeah. I would, I would say the same thing to you, but we need to be careful now.
Yeah.
Okay, agrees to promote.
Christmas lights, lights on.
What?
Christmas lights, lights on.
Christmas lights, lights on, yeah.
We're doing lights.
Remembrance Day.
Yeah, litter pick before remembrance day.
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong to do with SIDS at this point, is there?
No, no, we can wait.
I think we'll wait till later.
I think we'll wait better after.
Okay, the one blank items. Okay, 156, the date of the next meeting, that is Tuesday, the sixth of December. So obviously we've reached the meetings around the Christmas period, period, Tuesday, the sixth of December. We mentioned on the way, I believe that is two weeks. And then 157, explosion of press and public, to the, of press and public, we did experience, and we have to have a proposal.
Yeah.
Sorry, Donald.
Yes, Sergeant, so excuse me, Paul, as I am.